I'll call the June 25th meeting of the Common Council to order at 7:00 PM. You could all stand up as Mr. Elliott leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Pruzenska, could you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have approval of our minutes from our June 17th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve our minutes from the June 17th meeting. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agendas presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve our agenda and a second for tonight's meeting. This is a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I have several cards up here, but if anybody else would like to add to that, do you have any over there?
Nope.
I took them all. And just a quick reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes and try not to repeat the person who spoke before you. We've got a lot to go through tonight and we don't have anything to vote on tonight with this topic. We can keep our comments unique and we will hear you. First up is Myra Ping. On deck is Jeff McCarthy. Also, please state your name and address when you start.
Hello, my name's Myra Ping and my address is 1437 Clinton Street in Noblesville. I've lived in downtown Noblesville for almost three years now and I want to comment on the recent and planned tree removal actions that I recently heard of. I appreciate Mayor Jensen's well-spoken comments in the Hamilton County Reporter on June 21st and he listed many environmental values that trees provide. For instance, the air temperature cooling effect, the filtering of air and water, preventing erosion, noise reduction, providing more O2. In addition, the trees have been attributed with greatly promoting mental health and a healthy natural environment for children to play in. They raise property values and can greatly add to the aesthetics of the neighborhood, which can attract new residents like myself. I believe that if a tree is diseased, it should be removed and I understand and see the problems caused by tree roots and resulting uneven sidewalks. I live on Clinton Street, so there's a lot of uneven sidewalks there. As a physical therapist for over 30 years, I'm very familiar and sympathetic with the ADA concerns, but I'm wondering if the city officials here are really making all possible efforts to retain our lovely big trees. Mr. Larry Kane recently had an op-ed published regarding the Noblesville tree removal plans. This gentleman's on the Board of Indiana Forest Alliance and he's a retired environmental lawyer. He cited many cities that have found ways to deal with sidewalk safety concerns other than cutting their trees down. Some of these cities, two that he mentioned in Indiana, I have no idea where these are, I'm not giving you the names, two in Ohio, Washington DC, Lake Forest, Illinois, Salt Lake City, Seattle, Savannah. Myself, I realize that I've come to this topic a little late in the game, but even in the past two days, I have found two articles about methods that other cities such as Portland, Oregon, and Savannah, Georgia are using to solve their tree and sidewalk issues that don't include removing the trees. These cities seem to have made saving their trees the priority. So I'd like to see some more evidence and be reassured that the powers being in our town have researched all of the possible measures that have been put out there and experimented with and found success with in these other communities. These other cities may be placing a higher value in consideration on their beautiful trees.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Jeff McCarthy and Wesley Roderman is on deck.
I'm Jeff McCarthy, 1360 Logan Street. I don't have anything specifically prepared, but I wanted to speak on behalf of, I think it would be a great horrific atrocity if you came in and cut down our mature trees. We moved here nine years ago and part of the reason we moved here is the charm of the city. We do a lot to save all of our historic architecture. We've done a good job with that without realizing if you come in and you have an arborist who doesn't seem to understand that you can, there are workarounds. Cities around the world, all over the United States, have figured out ways to save our trees. He seems to be, I've met with him three times, he seems to be completely set that trees have to come down. I think he's convinced you, I think he's convinced the Tree Board, it's not true. And if you cut down our mature trees, it will dramatically, dramatically change the charm of our city. So you have to do whatever you can to find alternatives than coming in and doing what's going on at Oakmont where you come in and clear cut those trees. I understand there's only four people who can plant trees, but you can hire contractors to come in and cut down clear cut trees and then they can't plant again until the spring. But even then, you have small trees, these trees, we're talking about cutting down in Old Town, some of them are 60, 70, 100 years old, you can't just replace those. And if you take a walk through our town, our beautiful town, if you cut down these trees, it will destroy the charm of our town. Thank you.
Wesley, wait a minute, who are you?
I'm Wesley.
Oh, sorry.
Roderman. Shocker.
Mark Roderman.
I get it all the time.
Okay, I've got two Rodermans, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
I live at 7343 Harden Oak Drive. It's a war zone in my street right now. It looks like it. I mean, there's not a person there that doesn't feel physically violated by this. I mean, they have come into our home and they have ripped out the beauty of our street and they're going to continue to do it all over our neighborhood. We will not have anything left if you allow this to continue. This is horrific, what is happening here. And everybody just sits there like nothing's happening. Please, please, come drive down my street. It's not good. It's not good at all. I mean, okay, the practical side of this, where's the money coming from for this? Who gave it to us? And who gets to decide where it gets spent? I mean, we hear that the funding for our main boulevard, which is amazing, hasn't been fully funded. Where's that money coming from? And we have a right to know this, don't we? We have a right to know how you came up with doing this. Why is this the only way that this can happen? I mean, there's got to be something. There's innovative things happening all over the world and the only thing, there's got to be something different. There's got to be. We need help. Please, come and drive down my street, all of you. Just drive down it.
Hi, my name is Mark Roderman. I live at 7343 Harden Oak Drive, which is now ground zero for scorched earth. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood about a year and a half ago. We moved to Noblesville about a year before that. We took our time. We were very careful in looking for a home. We had a criterion. One of the big ones was trees and we found it. That was the perfect neighborhood. Certainly, there are issues with concrete buckling. We moved from Arizona. We lived in a community where there were mature trees, but they had a process there. It was a never-ending process where every two or three, every year, two or three or four trees, two or three areas of buckled sidewalk was fixed and then the next year you do the same. So basically, what that means is if it's done, if it's managed like that, the beauty and the value of the neighborhood remains, right? So thank you, didn't quite need three minutes. My wife was first and she said it most. Thank you.
Eric Bratton.
I live at 17982 Kinder Oak Drive. I'm a resident of Oakmont and I'm here to express also how upset I am over the large-scale tree removal taking place. I've lived in Noblesville since 1992. I work for the schools. My husband's a small business owner and I'm telling you this because we're invested in our community. We love our city. We love what we do, who we work for, and being here. We didn't choose to go to Fisher's or Carmel or other places. And as a taxpayer, we are upset. We specifically chose the west side of Noblesville and Oakmont to move to in 2019. We feel the communication has been very poor to the residents about this project and the timeline. Things continue to change as we progress and again, things haven't been transparent. We realize there's a grant and I understand that you have to meet requirements at the grant, but we're also sacrificing the beauty of the neighborhood and making a lot of people upset in the process. I don't know, I don't trust that the city's addressed all of our concerns and heard all options or looked into all options. I get there's an ADA compliance issue. Mayor Jensen came out, he explained what's going on and I recognize, I do agree, some of the trees do maybe need to go and some areas do need to be resolved, but I do think there's still other alternatives and instead of rushing to this and just knocking all these trees down, we need to slow down a little bit. And we're not the only ones slated for this. Now I'm hearing someone else speak about Old Town. I know some of the other neighborhoods a little bit northwest are going to be slated. I mean, this is going to make others upset. These are large, these are large, large trees that cannot just be replanted and regrown. We're ruining the beauty of our neighborhoods just to mobilize contractors and save a buck. We're failing of the community and I think we're failing to examine other alternatives and finding middle ground. So this is my home and I want to maintain its beauty and I urge you to please take consideration in the progression of this project and to review other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Culp.
Hi, my name is Courtney Culp and I live at 17946 Forest and Oak Drive in Noblesville in Oakmont and I struggled with what to say today. There's so many things to say. First of all, Wesley asked me how I was doing and I forgot to ask her how she was doing because she just lost her tree today, the tree that defined how her home looked and so she's pretty upset. We're all pretty upset. I'll try not to cry. I come here today to ask the tree cutting to stop. It is already a tragedy to have lost as many trees as we have in two days with the accelerated cutting that occurred. We can stop the bleeding now. I am here to say that the city claims that they offered, they offered an opportunity for discussion, but in actual fact, the plans were set and Oakmont was told what would be happening. It was only after collective outrage that the number of trees was reduced once and then again, in talking to John Easley again today, the number is down. He said to me, where did you come up with 144? I said, you told me that last week, John, Friday. And he said, no, it's 139 now. So trees are suddenly getting saved because we're putting pressure on you guys because we want this to stop. In municipalities all over Indiana and in the United States, there is an effort to save trees and use alternative methods for safe walkways. Oakmont residents have amassed many ideas and none of them were adequately discussed with the city except for one and even then, the city rejected it after one test area. The city wants a 30-year stretch of concrete and against the comparator, all other methods will fail. All other methods for safe walkways that spare trees will fail. In fact, concrete will fail before 30 years, as most concrete contractors will tell me. I come today to say that there is still an opportunity for the city to make lemonade out of lemons. As I've stated to others, were this administration to decide to change course, I would be at the front of the line talking about their virtues. To be an ecologically progressive city with creative ideas to maintain the natural, hardworking and vital infrastructure could help put Noblesville further on the map as one of the great places to live and raise a family. We in Oakmont would support you and we would help you with further research and cost analysis, the many options for creating safe walkways while saving trees. And we would share this good news with the world and stop talking about how our city doesn't listen to us and doesn't value our opinions, our home values, and doesn't value the trees. Let's stop this today. Stop the cutting today. You've already taken nine trees and you're heading down Benton Oak and you're going to take a whole bunch more. Stop, stop the cutting today. Set up meetings so we can devise a better plan for Oakmont and a better Noblesville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have one card here that says Oakmont residents. If you could state your name, you're going to have to spell it for me too.
Hi, I'm Lisa Taylor. I live at 7322 Harden Oak Drive. I've lived there 25 years and to tell you what's happening to our neighborhood, it just breaks my heart. It's horrible. One of the things we looked forward to moving here was an area that was established, there were beautiful trees. In the fall, you can see the changing of the colors and now we're going to lose that. Walking outside, having no trees to go under, no hearing the birds, it just, it breaks my heart what's happening. I'm assuming this is going to happen to other neighborhoods. I can't imagine there's not other neighborhoods that have uneven sidewalks too, but there's got to be a way that you can do this without destroying everything that's beautiful about our neighborhood. If you want trees to cut down, I have trees in my backyard, you're welcome to cut them down, but why do you have to take what has made our neighborhood what it is and established over the years? And I just want to say, another thing that upsets me is you guys came in here like a tornado to cut those trees down. I didn't understand why it's got to be done so urgently and you come at 7:00 AM when some people aren't even up and you start working and tearing down trees. I just don't understand. It's, it just breaks my heart what's happening and I wish that you could think of some other way to fix this problem instead of taking away everything that's beautiful about our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Lynn Smith. I live at 18001 Benton Oak Drive. I've also been there for 25 years and I'm going to ask you all one thing because we all seen it or hopefully all seen what's going on. Mr. Jensen, we appreciate the air. You cannot talk to us, but I'll tell you what, I can remember when the trees we had were maybe eight feet high. Now they're 60 feet high and it's absolutely gorgeous. Now, in the fall, with the leaves turning like that, but with everything being wiped out, it is, I mean, no one's lying, it's BS. It's really bad and it's not what we came here for. But I'm going to ask one thing, y'all have a power and I'd like for one of y'all to stand up and ask for a vote to say, stop it. Let's investigate, let's hold up, but ask one of you gentlemen to raise a motion to stop the cutting until we can get this under control and understand. So I'll ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. On to the mayor's comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have a quick update for you on some things happening this week, but I just first of all want to thank those who took time tonight to come here this evening. I know, as we've alluded to many times from this dais and at public meetings over the last several months, this is a very difficult conversation and we've tried to listen openly and hear from residents and I've tried to respond to everyone who's reached out to us. I know a lot have reached out to you as well and I appreciate you all taking time to listen and to learn. I also really appreciate the folks that work in our street department and John Easley had to direct some times, some very tough conversations and I appreciate they've done it and from my perspective with class and respect that we would ask our city employees to do. So thank you and we're going to continue to listen and work towards, move forward with this project. So one thing I did want to allude to though, I don't know Myra or Jeff and spent much time with them, but we have no plans for any tree removal in Old Town Noblesville, so I would like to just go ahead and put the hat to rest before we leave here tonight. There is, I'm not sure, I love There is, I'm not sure, I, I love Logan Street and Clinton Street. There's no plans for tree removal at those point unless there was a specific tree that's been highlighted. So I just wanted to maybe stop that rumbling prior to it getting out of, out of hand before we leave here tonight. So no plans for that, but appreciate, obviously, everyone voicing their concern on the topic. Two things I want to point out. I just came this afternoon on behalf of all of you to welcome all the folks who are participating in SERVE Week. Patrick Probst and his team at SERVE Noblesville are, will be out all over the community. You'll see church groups, you'll see Little League teams, you'll see departments from the city of Noblesville going out and doing the work throughout our community, whether it be, it be trash pickup or mural painting in our downtown. A lot of great work. It is the largest volunteer operation in Hamilton County. It's taking place this week in Noblesville. So I know a lot of you are participating as well with different groups, so thank you for doing that. And again, even in the midst of hard conversations, I'm proud of what this community stands for and, and what, what our community stands up to do. The second thing I would just like to point out, I actually had a chance this morning to go and speak at the Forest Park Aquatic Center, which was actually the location of my very first job at the concession stand in seventh grade many, many years ago. But Greg Connor and his team at Forest Park Aquatic Center have raised some private funds to put banners all across the aquatic center that are honor, in honor of the 23 Olympians who have gone through that pool, which is incredible. You know, we've, we've heard big names, David Udaya being some, and this year, we also have a, a Noblesville Miller going on to the Paris Olympics. So we have a lot to be proud of, and, and I'm, I know we all share in the, in the pride that is the Forest Park Aquatic Center, and I'm really proud of that organization. So we got to honor them today and, and send off some of our local heroes as they go to Paris. So if you get a chance, stop by the, the aquatic center, thank Ken Bowling and Greg Connor and Elena Chancwal and their entire board for getting that, that project up because it really does honor some great, truly American heroes that were housed right here in Noblesville. So just wanted to highlight those two things. Also, just one quick note, too, to thank the, the residents of Noblesville for the patience with the 32 project. We are coming to an end of that here in the next several weeks, and we'll be, continue to be updating you all as council and the public at large as we get wrapped up and hopefully open up our main artery through town, which I know has not been an easy process for anyone. That is a state project, but we've tried to partner with them as heavily as we can to get the word out about that, knowing that that does have some challenges to our, to our residents. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but I just appreciate all that you do to continue to serve the citizens of Noblesville.
Mr. Jensen, I know there's still time to get involved in SERVE. Do you have any contact information?
Yeah, actually, you can check out there on all social media platforms. Facebook's probably the best place to go to sign up and reach out to them. They will welcome you on the fly. I know the mayor's office will be out on Friday, putting together meal kits at the fairgrounds. I know our police officers, our street department, our planning department, many others are taking part, and SERVE would be happy to fold you into those volunteer opportunities as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel committee reports. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Finance Committee met on June 20th. Dave Johnson, Aaron Smith, Megan Wiles, and myself. Caitlin Moss went over an ordinance for the update of the credit card use policy for city employees. And Amy Smith discussed a bond authorization for an economic development area authorization over at Noble West, west of town. We had Justin Swanson and Lindsay Moss in from Bo's Public Affairs, and they talked with us a little bit about property tax and lit reform, TIF reform, and road funding. The claims docket does come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve the claims. It's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Previously discussed ordinances. Counsel to consider ordinance 250624, an amendment to the 2024 salary ordinance, 250923, as amended for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville. Holly Ramon.
Good evening. Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. As discussed at our last meeting and as outlined in your letter, we are requesting three changes to the salary ordinance. One is for our engineering department. It's a simple title change from an inspector positions to a, to a stormwater technician. The second is for the street department, and this is to provide an employee who has received training to become a CDL trainer, to allow him to have $2 extra per hour while he is training other employees to obtain their CDL. And then the third is for our Parks and Recreation Department. Effective July 1st, the Department of Labor is increasing the minimum salary threshold for an exempt position, and therefore, we're asking for an increase in our golf professional base rate of pay to meet that minimum requirement so we can keep that position as an exempt position. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
No questions. Just a reminder that this went through Finance Committee, and we had a robust conversation there.
With that, Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 25-06-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion, approve ordinance 250624 in a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Prusinski.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine a, zero nay. It is approved.
Thank you. New ordinances for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance 260624, an ordinance of the common council authorizing the city of Noblesville, Indiana to issue one or more series of its taxable economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Amy Smith.
Good evening. An economic development agreement with Hazel Dell Apartments LLC was approved at the April 9th council meeting for the Noble West project, which is located at the northeast, northeast corner of Hazel Dell and Eden Shaw Lane. As a reminder, this project is a mixed-use development with an estimated investment of $78 million. It will consist of up to 284 multifamily units, not more than 150 for sale townhome unit, townhome units, and 30,000 square feet of commercial retail space. The ordinance and the resolution later on are the next steps in carrying out the commitments of that agreement. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of a bond that will be purchased by the developer. This bond will be for an amount not to, not to exceed $6.7 million with a maximum interest rate of 8% for 25 years. The bond proceeds will be used for eligible costs related to the apartment component of the project. With the new creation of a new allocation area, which we presented to you later, the RDC will pledge 83% of the TIF increment to the debt service of the bond. And as Mr. Davis mentioned, this item was presented to Finance Committee and does receive a favorable recommendation. It will be back before you at your July 9th meeting, but I'm hands, happy to answer any questions you might have.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance 270624, an ordinance amending section 30.08 of the Noblesville City Code regarding the use of credit cards by employees.
Move to introduce.
Caitlin Moss.
Second.
Oh, second. Caitlin Moss.
Hi, Caitlin Moss, Deputy Controller. Before you use an ordinance to update the city's credit card policy as it relates to employees, this action is just a modernization. It's not a new policy, and there haven't been any issues that are leading to this change. We're just trying to kind of update things to how they actually work in the city. So the changes that we're proposing are, first, to remove the language that each department only gets one credit card. The credit card company requires us to have a city employee be the actual name on the card rather than a department. Additionally, we are specifying when an employee may no longer utilize a credit card and when it must be returned to the controller's office, as well as the timing and requirements for submitting receipts. This also authorizes the city to pay a credit card fee and bans the use of a digital wallet for the credit card, like Apple Pay, Google Pay, and specifies actions required to be taken to prevent fraud by the employees. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Again, this was something that was discussed with Finance Committee and come with a favorable recommendation when it's time to vote.
See you in two weeks. Counsel to consider resolution RC 2824, resolution proving a declaratory resolution and economic development plan for the Redevelopment Commission, amending the Noblesville Consolidated Economic Development Area and creating the Noble West Allocation Area. Amy Smith.
Hello again. The resolution before you approves the creation of the Noble West Allocation Area. The project site for Noble West project I discussed earlier tonight is currently located within the Noblesville Consolidated Economic Development Area and Allocation Area. The portion of the site where the multifamily units will be located will be removed from the Noblesville Consolidated Allocation Area, and the new Noble West Allocation Area will be created. The declaratory resolution was approved by the RDC, and the Plan Commission has approved the Plan Commission order. As I mentioned earlier, a portion of the tax increment generated from this TIF area will be pledged to debt service. This item was presented to Finance as well and did receive a favorable recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I know we discussed it in pre-council. The apartment piece of this is being pulled out of...
Yes, just the...
By itself?
Yes. So you can see here in the blue, that's the apartment piece. That's the retail portion right there. And then for the townhomes.
Mr. President, just a note as well, just so that the council can be, have their minds at ease, the finance team on Project Scoreboard did look at this removal from the consolidated area and has no concerns since this area is currently undeveloped. So there's no concerns from the financing on that project.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve resolution RC-28-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve resolution RC 2824 in a second. This is a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Thank you.
On to council comments. No comments? Oh. Mr. Thurston.
Mr. President, I do want to just say a couple of things to the folks that are still here regarding the trees. I don't want you to think we're up here not listening to you. Last time you were here, I took time, met with several key people within the departments, got background history, looked at where we stand currently, what it looks like in the future. I will tell you, we all live here, too. We all like trees. It's tough. I, I will tell you, it's, it's something that we'll continue to look at, but I don't want you, because we're not saying anything, to think that you're just up here talking and we're not listening. We are listening. We're looking at things. I will tell you, I have a better understanding of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. I, I really believe that what we're doing as an administration is the right thing. It doesn't feel like that, but if you look at the history and where we're at, it's, it just seems to me that this is what we needed to do. So we'll continue to look at it, I'm sure, and I'm sure everyone else will, but we are listening.
Mr. President.
Thanks for saying that.
Thank you. Ms. Wiles.
I was just going to mention that before, the Fourth of July will take place before the next time this council gets together, and the city of Noblesville has a long history of having a Fourth of July parade through downtown Noblesville, and then a fireworks festival that will take place at Forest Park. So if anyone's interested in learning more about that opportunity, you can go to the city's Facebook page or the city's website and learn more about being able to celebrate